Okay. Good evening, welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number 15, held today on October 2nd, 2023. This meeting is hereby called to order. May I have the statement of notice of publication, Madam Clerk?
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law 1975, Notice of this special meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 6th, 2023, posted in the Municipal Building bulletin board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Role call?
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindi?
Here.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yeah.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Council President Siulah Zapson.
Zapson. Please stand for the pleasure of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for silence. Thank you, please be seated. There are no proclamations, honors, or presentations, however, in the agenda session, we do have something to discuss, this, of course, being the business session of the council, no action will be taken. As you know, due to the tragedy on Virginia Street, there's been much discussion, and the police were tasked to investigate the situation and come to us with recommendations as to ways of handling the speeding on Virginia Street. There were two emails on this, one going back in August 20th, and one more recently in September. The one in August was their evaluation as to traffic studies, speeds, things like that, and then the one in September was recommend the following measures be performed. And basically, what we're here to do is to discuss that idea as to what the council thinks. No action will be taken, of course, because the public will want to have input on this. But what are your thoughts as to the four items that were recommended for Virginia Street? And before I do that, our chief is not here, but, sir, do you have any thoughts on this, or just this report speaks for itself?
Good evening, Mayor, Borough Council, and residents. It basically speaks for itself. As you stated, we've been tasked with the... The Police Department was tasked with the duty of to take a look at the traffic and conduct a study, which we have done. Based on the investigation that we performed and the study that we performed, we've made the following recommendations to the Mayor and Borough Council, and feel that that will definitely improve the safety with regards to pedestrian, pedicycle, and vehicular traffic in that area.
Okay. Mr. Gurchensky, you are head of Public Safety. Any thoughts?
I do concur with what the Police Department has said, because primarily, it is a residential area. The suggestion of a four-way stop is a good idea, cost-effectively right now. And of course, like I said, it is a residential area, so we can't really go exorbitantly and, you know, just the size of the street and everything to kind of prohibit it.
Yes, the four items that were recommended were painted, generalization by way of a solid double yellow line, painted the entire length on Virginia Street, stretching from Garfield to Brenning Place, Garwood, sorry. Directional arrows indicating traffic flow at the street curve by Brenning Place, and also on Garwood. Painting the word "slow" on Virginia Street in both directions, one northbound, east side of the street, between Garwood and Daley Street, the second southbound, west side of the street, between Cleveland and Colfax, and then a placement of a four-way stop at the intersection of Virginia Street and Darrell Street with painted "stop" and "stop" lines on the street in all directions. Other thoughts on that? General consensus, yes?
Could I ask that, since it's on the agenda session, if we add this also to the documents that we upload online, so that people can see what the recommendation was as well?
Well, yes, yes. I mean, this is just talking among ourselves. We haven't decided anything, and before we do finally make a decision, we do want public input on this. So, yes, that is the next step, to put the...
The study and the recommendation?
I was gonna say, yeah, the study and the, both the studies, there were more than one study, and then also the recommendations on there.
Would it possibly be possible, and I'm sorry, interlocutor, to put like a rendering as well, of what it would look like, so visually?
I suppose that could be done. Okay, would you see that have that done, a rendering? Okay, very good. All right, then. And then, at our next meeting, or the meeting in November, we'll discuss that some more. We'll try to get this done before the cold weather comes in. Moving on to ordinances, first reading by title only, 2023-26, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend Chapter 193, entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I move that council pass ordinance 2023-26, on first reading by title only, that clerk be authorized to publish same as required by law with the second reading, and a public hearing to be held at the meeting on October 23rd, 2023, at 7:00 PM, by ways of electronic teleconference, or on council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Okay, moved by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Gurchensky. This concerns handicap removal. Role call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
We'll revisit this October 23rd, 2023-27, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending, an ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain Borough officers and employees in the Borough of South River.
Your pleasure on the ordinance.
So we'll make a motion to move the council pass, sorry, I move that the council pass ordinance 2023-27, on first reading by title only, that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with second reading and public hearing to be held at the meeting on October 23rd, 2023, at 7:00 PM, by ways of electronic teleconference, or in council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street in South River.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ballas, moved by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Ms. Ballas. Role call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
We'll revisit this also on the 23rd. Moving on to reports. Good evening, Mr. Koch.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, everybody. Thank you. The 2022 Local Aid Program, we're just working with the contractor to close that out. The 2023 Local Aid Program, we're continuing our work on the design. The 2023 Local Transportation Projects Grant, your application is in. I'm thinking maybe in November, you might hear. And the same goes for the 2024 Local Aid Program. The Electrical Substation Maintenance is out to bid. Bids are scheduled for Friday, October 13th, and the Stormwater Assistance Grant Application, our survey crew is out surveying the various inlets in the borough. And that is it, sir. Thank you.
Okay, any comments, questions? Thank you. Hearing done?
Thank you. Mayor, one resolution on the agenda. It is for purchases through state contract. These are separate purchases throughout the year that accumulate to a total that's over the bid threshold, so we're memorializing it by resolution. That's it.
Any comments, questions?
I just had a quick question. There was no amount on it. Is it because we didn't go out yet, or get the quote?
No, so it's like purchases, like due to Fire Department and Police Department, say they buy something for $2,000 or $3,000, but they buy it like seven times. That state contract then goes over $17.5, so we're just memorializing it. So each individual purchase did not need to have a resolution, but in total, they spent over $17.5 for that state contract.
Okay.
And that is, is that on this bill list, or it has been already?
It's been purchased prior, and then some could be on this one, but it's throughout the whole entire year.
Okay.
Our chief, oh, our fire chief? Any report?
How are you? Just like to thank everybody, the Police Department, DPW, everybody for the help with the fire we had last Sunday. It was a long day, wet day, but we got through it. Right now, everything else is status quo. You should, in the next two weeks, probably, you'll see the new engine in service. We finally got it back from getting the last of it fixed, of what we wanted, what we needed to be fixed from the, from, you know, being delivered to us and everything, but other than that, right now, we're just status quo.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I do, Chief. I had asked you the last time you were here, and I know last meeting, we still didn't have an answer. Do we know what caused the fire down Herman Street?
At this time, it's still, I was told, last I was told, it was still under investigation. It was still in the hands of his insurance company. We don't have a ruling yet, no.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Torres?
Yes, Mayor. Next Monday, October 9th, will be closed. There'll be no yard waste pickup. Starting October 16th to November 2nd, the Fall Hydrant Flushing starts. The information's in the calendar, be on the Borough website. We'll be sending out a NICSO before each week also. And then, on October 16th, the curb side leaf pickup starts also from October 16th to December 22nd. That's all I have.
All right. Anything for our head of DPW? Police Department?
Good evening, Mayor, Borough Council. This, let's see here, Wednesday, the 4th, is National Coffee with a Cop Day, so please come down and see our officers at 56 Ferry Street at Recandu Exeru. I don't know if I spelled, I said that properly.
Recandu Dushiru.
There we go. Thank you. 56 Ferry Street, so our officers will be there from 8:00 AM till 10:00 AM. And then, we also received our onsite accreditation, which is an inspection of the Police Department that takes place by the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police. They're independent inspectors who come in and take a look at everything we do for the past three years. So we're up for our re-accreditation status, and that is taking place November 1st. So we're hoping that we will achieve that re-accreditation status once again, which is something we've held for close to 12 years now. So we're very proud of that, and we're looking forward to that day.
Very good. Thank you. Anything for our deputy chief there? Or from the Clerk's office?
Yes, Alyssa asked me to report that mail-in ballots were mailed out last week, and that the municipal building drop box is open.
Okay, very good. Now, if you want to return it to the Board of Elections, they are now at a new location on Kennedy Boulevard at number 26. They're also, there is the Clerk's, the part of the Clerk's office that sends out the ballots. They are also there, along with the warehouse for the machines. So they're all under now one roof at the place. I know that because I had to return my ballot there, having made a mistake, so, but I got it corrected, and all is well. So, important to vote. Anything as far as legal is concerned?
I have nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay, then. Mr. Gindi, anything to report?
Nothing to report today.
Okay. Mrs. Ballas?
I just have one thing. The Board of Health is collaborating with Central State's Live Life Well Mobile Health Clinic. It will be bringing a van to the parking lot of the VFW on Wednesday, October 25th, between, where's my time, 11:00 and 2:00. The services that are going to be offered are COVID vaccines from Pfizer, flu vaccines, A1C diabetes screening, and blood pressure screenings. No ID documentation or proof of insurance is needed, and to receive any of these services, there's no appointment necessary. It is totally free. If anybody has any questions, they can call 732-308-0570. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Olivera?
Yeah, so Parks and Rec, we have some fun, family-filled events coming up, starting off with, on October 7th, we have Movie in the Park at Volunteers. We will be showing Hocus Pocus, so we will, residents can start arriving at 6:00, and the movie will begin roughly around 7:00 o'clock, once it gets dark. On 10/21, we're going to do trunk-and-treat a little bit differently this year. We've decided to partner with the library to do trunk-and-treat. It will be at 3:00 PM, and then afterwards, the library will be hosting a haunted library. So, some of the kids in town will be able to walk through the library and just have a, you know, a fun-filled event, and working with a Borough partner, you know, we want to try to maximize as much as we can for our kids. On 10/30, we will be doing the house decorating contest judging. We'll be putting out a list of residents that signed up. This way, we're able to have our residents go around town. I know Jessica and Terry are trying to do like a poll as well for resident voting, so hopefully, I'll have some more on that on the 23rd. And on December 1st, we will do our Christmas tree lighting. It's going to be at Daley's Pond. We have a very awesome surprise for everyone, so please come out. We're looking forward to that. And basketball and wrestling update, basketball and wrestling registration will be opening in the next week or so, so please be on the lookout for that. One thing I do wanted to bring up, because I know Terry's been getting a couple of calls on this, playground equipment. Joe, I'm sorry to always bother you with questions regarding the playground equipment, but it seems like we finally have an update. The reason why the Daley's Pond Park has not been installed yet, from my understanding, is the foam is still on backorder, and they cannot give us a firm date as to when it's going to be back in stock. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so please be patient with us. The playground equipment is in. I know the company, from my understanding, asked to install the playground equipment, but in speaking with Joe, I just don't think it's realistic to put new playground equipment and then caution tape all. I know that happened at Fitzies, and it was not the best scenario. God forbid, a child gets hurt going on there. We just don't want to create that liability. So hopefully, sooner rather than later, I will be calling you every couple of days, asking for an update, so I apologize, Joe.
I did email him today, though.
Okay. Okay, but thank you again, and I just wanted to apologize for always calling you about that, so, thank you.
Question, if it should rain on Saturday, where's the best place to find out that people will know that it has been postponed or canceled?
Everything will be done through social media. We're, it's not going to rain. We're going to speak that into existence. So, everything will be posted if we do have to reschedule it.
Okay.
But let's not put that negative energy in the air right now.
No. Okay, Mr. Gurchensky?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This coming, the Senior Office on Aging, this coming Monday, October 9th, they will be closed for Columbus Day. On the thrift store, the thrift, yeah, right. The thrift store is closing at the Office on Aging, too, and they are going to have a final sale on October 20th. Please, no more donations. It, prices will be greatly reduced, and it's going to be, just because of lack of participation, it's going to be from 9:30 AM to 1:00 PM on October 20th, which is a Friday. And after that particular point, there will be no more thrift store. The monthly mingle is coming up on Friday, October 27th. It's $5 prepaid, and it's going to be breakfast for dinner. The event is going to be at the office, and the front doors will open at 3:00 PM. So signup begins Monday, today, October 2nd. So if you do get your deposit in, and they'll reserve a spot for you, and space is limited. With that, I, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Mira?
Thank you, Mayor. The Environmental Commission, I'm not going to say too much, because I know two of our members are here this evening, and hopefully, they'll have some more to say, but it is regarding the rain garden that will be implemented on October 14th at the, at the high school. I also want to mention that there is a other nonprofit in town looking to do a Sustainable Development Conference, and it's going to be held at St. Mark's Christian Academy. And that's, October 15th is a Sunday, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We're looking to see what more they want in involvement with our borough, as well as other neighboring towns, with sustainability within New Jersey. It's a separate nonprofit that's going to have this event. I was told that they've done it before in South River as well, but this is the first time that I heard about it, so we're looking to see and get more information on that. The library had suggested to implement more events, well, a resident had suggested to implement more events that the library has on our Borough website, so I went ahead and contacted our web person and just got that information to the library as well, so that monthly, we'll be able to post the events that are happening at the library on our Borough website. It seems that a lot of people that are interested in the library might not have social media the way the library uses its social media, so this will just be another way to find out what's going on within the library. And they are already in their plans of their annual bacon book sale. That's going to happen on November 6th through 9th. The 10th, they will be closed because of, I'm sorry, Veterans Day. They're going to close on Friday, as well as Saturday, for Veterans Day. And the Board of Education, I do want to mention something big that started today. The South River Public School District is excited to announce the implementation of a free after-school program known as the 21st Century Community Learning Centers. This was part of the grant that they received, that they were able to achieve, to have free after-school programs for our kids. They're going to start with 3rd grade through 5th grade first. Today was the first day, so my excited 3rd grader got to stay after school. I want to get the word out there, one, because it's free, two, because I think they put a lot of hard work in getting and receiving this grant into our town. I don't know how well it's been out there, because today was the first day, yes. There weren't many kids coming out when I went to go pick up my daughter, so I don't know if it's just because it's starting and people weren't prepared for it to begin so soon, but they're taking baby steps to begin this program within the school district. So, just want to remind everybody to check their RAM emails. There's a lot of information on there about it. They have a Google form for you to fill out if your child is interested. I know right now, it's only until 3:45 PM, which is an extra hour and 15 minutes, that kids get to be with students, teachers, and be able to do their homework and have tutoring, but they will be extending that program for larger amounts of time, and giving kids more fun activities to do as well, so. I also want to say, I know we spoke about the, the Virginia Street traffic study. I think it's great that we will also be posting that on the Borough website, so that everybody can take a look at that. I did formally request, along with, or to Sergeant Flores, to also try to get a traffic study done on Whitehead Avenue. It is going to take a little bit, because they want to wait for the traffic to, not the traffic, I'm sorry, the, the curbs to be done, so that they can get an accurate, you know, study of how the speeding happens down on Whitehead Avenue. So, I hope that maybe by next meeting, construction will be done, and they'll be starting that, but I just wanted to let you all know that I thought that was definitely another step in making our streets safer in town. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just in case your agenda does not show it, those of you that are following along, we will be going into closed session at the end of the meeting after our governing body comments. I did receive this note, "Dear Mayor Krenzel, thank you and the Borough Council for including my family and remembering my son Chris in this year's 9/11 memorial service. It is a testament to South River that we still conduct a service after all these years. Sincerely, Joan Denkoff." And then she writes a little bit more about a note to me personally, but, yes, we still do the 9/11. Other towns do not do it, but after some 20 years, it's still a chance to remember what happened on that day, and a chance again for South River to come together, as I urge all of you to do so, whether it's Coffee with a Cop, or the Russian Fall Festival coming up, or all the other various items that are happening in this town, to come together and get to know your neighbor. Moving on to public comments, please come forward, give your name and address. You'll have 10 minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Dorian Kerber. I live at 24 Riva Avenue in Milltown. I can be on anybody's green team, and I'm on South River's green team. It's funny how you brought up the safety. We were working on that, and actually, Executive Director Bill Neary, he's former mayor of East Brunswick, is on Keep Middlesex Moving. This is our County Transportation Association. We had him speak at the last meeting to do a Streets Smart campaign. He provides signage, he provides speaking points, discussions, and it involves the Police Department, the council, mayor, as well as the other various departments to do the Streets Smart campaign. He can happily come to the next council meeting if you'd like to speak on this, to give you a more clearer picture of what he can do. They do data sets, information, they do surveys, they reach out to the community, and yes, 19% of people, he was on this session about how many people usually do not have smartphones, or online, or nothing. There's 19% of people throughout the nation, in many towns, that don't have a form of communication online. So anything that's printed is valuable to them, or, you know, television is also helpful. I was a part of that meeting, and it was all discussions about how we can better do our streets, and as a matter of fact, this month, an email will come out for the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program. When we start the Streets Smart campaign, it enhances your chances of usually getting awarded for this grant. That goes more in-depth. That does additional work. It involves Voorhees Transportation Coordinating with Rutgers University, the New Jersey, I always get this wrong, Transportation Planning Association of New Jersey, they're part of this grant. You don't receive any funding. It's through the NJTPA, this grant. However, they distribute the funds as necessary to really concentrate and do demonstration projects and enhance at least two streets. And you pick them. It's discussed, it's committee meetings, usually have about six meetings. How do I know this? I did this in Milltown, and it worked. So, I can certainly do that. I'm hoping to be able to apply for the grant if we get things done in time, and really focus on what streets you want to enhance, and...
Please have him come either to our next meeting or our November meeting.
Okay, sounds great. The second point is about Blue Acres. I happen to be at the Sayerville Shade Tree Commission meeting, and for the third time, they're moving their community gardens, and they suspected it's probably the fence. Believe it or not, fences are not doable. The reason being is, no matter if it's a post, or if it's the chain-link fence, you're blocking and impeding the water flow. So structural buildings or things are not allowed, definitely not allowed. This year, I took advantage of the online program from the Jersey Urban Community Forestry Program for tree identification and information as well. I'm certified in Milltown. Wherever I move, it goes with me. And I had asked the question, you know, what's like the Blue Acres? What is it that you want to do, or can we do? And it was suggested that we put and plant two large trees on the property. And I brought this up to them, and they would not suggest that. The NJDEP Blue Acres Program, they own all Blue Acres. You manage it, the town. Obviously, probably Public Works is the one responsible for maintaining it. You decide, as council, what to do with these Blue Acres properties. And so I know this, because we have a county park in Milltown. I was facilitating, being the liaison, to do some of the work up there with scouts, or anyone that was interested in enhancing that property. Of course, the county owns it. You have to get approval through them before you can do any work on there. So it's just the same concept with the NJDEP Blue Acres. And when I emailed Heather, she mentioned that you have to fill out the form from the Office of Transactions and Public Land Administration. It is detailed. You can block and law, everything is so detailed. You have to tell who's managing it, locate... You have to tell who's managing it, locations, and what you want to propose. They have to approve everything prior for you to do anything on any Blue Acres property, just so you're aware. I wanted to bring this up because I had expressed interest of really doing some nice things. I've been trained to do pollinator gardens, training now to do rain gardens. I'm also a Lower Veriton Watershed Board Member and I was selected this Sunday to revamp this and rehabilitate this rain garden in New Brunswick at Boyd Park. If you go by near the amphitheater, there's a frame and they want people to take pictures through the frame, whatever's out there in the water, and post it online. Right in front of the frame, Rutgers built a rain garden. Unfortunately, New Brunswick wasn't really maintaining it. They were pretty much mowing it. So I'm thrilled to rehab it and getting the training from Rutgers. I took the training already, so I'm a green infrastructure champion, but now I'm getting hands-on infield, you know, work. So anything I can do to help the town to really enhance your parks, I have the resources, I have the liaisons and connections to get these things done.
Is there any chance that the DEP, that common sense could come to them that putting up a chain link fence is not the end of the world? It's not going to have a major effect on Mother Earth?
Yes, it would. Because a chain link fence has that pole on the bottom. Your posts are blocking the rain water from flowing. Because this is, the MS4 permit was approved in January 1 to do much more. Now you have to do watershed restoration. I don't know if you've received this information, but now that's the plan. You're going to have to concentrate on your waterways and also eventually, it's not like immediate that you have to do everything. There is a time schedule that they expect things to be accomplished. And it does impede the water flow. And if you look at open space, you don't see fences up. You don't see a lot of blockades. You don't see a lot of structures up. We have a barrier at the open space that was approved by Rick Lear, who's left the county, only just so people won't park up further on the grass. That was the only thing. So, but that's a little bit different for open space. But for Blue Acres, you can't do it. And there's a form that has to be filled out. It's an online form. It's not a printed form. You can print it out and then fill it out if you want, but you're going to have to submit it online. And it comes through the administrator, one of the employees, one of the council people, and that's how it's filled out. And I could forward that email to everyone if you'd like, just so you have the information.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is-
You can bring that down to you.
Thank you. I'm vertically challenged. So I am here tonight to say thank you to all of you.
I'm sorry, could you just state your name and address?
Judith Grañizal, G-R-A-N-I-Z-A-L. I sent notices to you about a property which was abandoned in town, number 10 Spring Street. And I'm very happy to report that on behalf of the 18 neighbors and myself who signed the request for assistance, we are very grateful that through your work in Mr. Suarez from Public Works and the crew from, I believe is Electrical Utility because they were cutting off branches and all that kind of thing. And also our Tom, our official for construction, right, code enforcement. The house and the lot has been really cleared. Julie, I think you have seen it. The neighbors are extremely happy. Actually, three people are interested in buying the property. We still have some work to do and I hope you would help us find the heir. This is estate property. I think I have found the heir to the property, I believe, through information from one of the neighbors. We believe that she's incarcerated. We need some help. So I called the police department. Apparently, obviously, I don't have enough authority to push that. So I'm emailing Tom to see if he can follow up. So I'm told that if we could locate the heir, perhaps we can move on things, right? So anyway, just to reiterate, on behalf of all the neighbors, thank you very much. And one more item, very quickly. Some of you know that I'm the new service coordinator for the senior buildings, Willet Manor and South River Landing. And on behalf of my residents, as I call them, thank you very much to our Electrical Utilities Billing Department for now accepting a credit, it's not really a credit card, but it's called an OTC card from United Healthcare that allows the people to pay for utility bills. So as you probably know, our electric utility was not accepting credit cards. This is not a real credit card, but it works as a debit card. So the residents are extremely happy that now they can use that extra resource to pay for the electrical bill. So again, thank you very much. I hope you will continue to help us to find the owner of the property.
Anyone else on first call?
Hello, council. My name's Ronald Lou. You just spelt it wrong. It's L-O-U-Q-U-E. I live at 85 Darrell Street. First thing is I like to tell everybody, thank you for the research on Virginia Street. All right, but I do have a couple suggestions. One is the blinking type stop signs that blink. The closer you get, the faster they blink. But letting people see. The second thing is, I'd like to see a camera on a street that, a speed camera that takes pictures and send tickets out through the mail. I'm just telling you, that's me. All right? Now, one complaint I do have is the drainage and roadside curbs on Virginia and Darrell Street are in terrible mess. Water runs down the street, it don't even go in the drain, it go in the hole before the drain. The reason why I picked this up is I'm riding my scooter down the street. Everywhere I see, they got these handicap ramps. So my question to the council is, when will this happen on Virginia Street, Virginia and Darrell? The handicap ramps repairing this drainage that's broken, the curb sides that look like it's a third world. All right? That's about all I got, but I wanted to bring it up. Thank you for listening.
But it, not so fast. I've never, I know of blinking stop signs, but I've never saw one that blinks faster as you approach. Is there one in this area?
Not necessarily, but riding my motorbike, going down towards Alabama, you will come across stop signs, look like they blink and the closer you get, the faster they blink.
Okay.
I'll do research if you want.
No, that's, that's fine. I'm just fascinated by it.
The key thing is about getting people to see things before it's too late. That's the whole key, you know? We can bring this up too, right? But that's the whole thing, is safety for the kids. I'm cutting grass, many times I see kids running stop signs on Darrell Street with bicycles. Again, I don't blame the pedestrian. I don't blame the kids. I just hope I'm not out there and one of them get hit. That's it. All right? I don't care who the kids are for, they're children. All right?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Muchas gracias.
Real quick, yes, I think Edison and Batuchin and Hobo can have those. I wonder what the heck they were, but they have a lot of stop signs now and they're very helpful.
Okay. Anyone else?
Jim Hutchison, 38, Virginia Street. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I also like to echo what Ron just stated. I want to thank everyone associated, especially the police department, for the study on Virginia Street. It's hard to believe, but on October 15th, it'll be one year since the accident. So it's, it's coming up on the one-year anniversary. And again, to this day, I still send out my deepest sympathy to the family of the woman who lost her life that night tragically. I just want to make sure I got everything associated with what this study is talking about. We're saying the four recommendations were a four-way stop, slow, painted on Virginia Street down by Brenig and up by Garwood. It's already down by Brenig. We already have in the street, it already says that. But touching it up would be good. And then a yellow line down the middle of Virginia. And then directional signs, I think is what you said, Mayor.
Painted channelization by way of a solid double-yellow line, installation of directional arrows indicating the traffic flow on Virginia Street at the street curve by Brenning Place, northbound, heading towards Morawski Court and on Virginia Street by Garwood Street, southbound, heading towards George Street.
Okay. That's, that's great. That's great. We already have put slow, I mean, we have stopped now at the intersections of Virginia and Darrell on both sides. And the stop signs, I believe now are all, they're illuminating types, they're reflective stop signs now. And I think there's some others that are scattered throughout the area, right in that general area. So we definitely had steps taken over the last few months. Again, it's great. So these steps are even better. I agree with Ron also. Blinking lights on the stop signs would be tremendous. And if we have a four-way stop there and they're blinking, you can blink through my blinds all night. I don't care. If it saves another life, so be it. I tend to sleep the other way to race and concede the lights. I also want to thank Councilwoman Mehta that, I agree 100%, we need to have this study online so that all the people who are very interested in this can get to see exactly what's going on so Ron and I don't have to be the neighborhood spokespersons with megaphones and so forth. So that was a great suggestion. Thank you, Julie. But again, thank you to everybody associated with this and I'm sure I can speak on behalf of the family. Obviously, something needs to be done and we're taking steps. And the more steps we take, I think the more focused there is on that area and people will start slowing down and God can stand by their sides and hopefully we never, ever, ever have another tragedy like that anywhere in the borough. That was just absolutely horrific. Something that Jimmy, excuse me, Councilman, you said about the office on Aging Mingle on the 27th, yes, I'm sure it's probably already sold out. But for those that would be coming, it is close to Halloween. I highly recommend you dress up in costume. Dressing is good. So dressing like in costume for Halloween would even be better. I'll probably dress up more than just a bus driver this year, so that'll be good.
Will we see Count Dracula again?
No.
No?
Someone else.
Ah.
I believe, I will not know though, Mayor. So that's good. The Christmas tree line, that's going to be at Daley's Pond?
Yes.
Okay. Not at the Historical Society.
Yep, Daley's Pond. We've got a special surprise this year, so hopefully it works out.
Very good. All righty. Again, thanks to everyone associated with this study. And again, my, my heart bleeds still for the woman's family who lost her life. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Richard Byrne, 11 Bissett Place, South River. We are going to have our rain garden installation on Saturday, October 14th, 9 o'clock, I believe. Good thing for that. The mayor warned us on Facebook about the fire and how it would cause water problems and a lot of people complained, but I think it's important, you know, not just, nobody complains when it goes right. So I can tell you that I had no problems with, with the water during that event. I believe it's my proximity to the 10-inch water main that actually goes underneath my house. And thanks to that map that they showed, there's a 20-inch main that goes down Whitehead Avenue. So I'm like, probably one of the best spots to be for the water not stopping. The traffic and pedestrian safety signs, we got a great response on those. We've put them all out. We got requests for more, so I have requested more signs from Bill Neary. So hopefully we'll get them in this week and really paper the town with awareness for what both our pedestrians, bike riders, and vehicle operators need to keep in mind that everyone is responsible for keeping everyone else safe, so.
Anyone else?
Sandra Delino. I wanted to give a very special thank you to the police department for helping with the flag racing, the Honduran flag racing. Councilwoman Olivera, Councilwoman Gindy, and Councilwoman Meira really helped us out that day and the event was an absolute success. We do have a large, diverse community and with some of the issues that came about with the parking on the street, it was resolved. The, the event did turn out successful and just wanted to thank the police department again for all of their help that day. So, thank you.
Sean Hauserman, 211 Willet Avenue. Question on the Virginia Street project. You said you were going to put it on the website and have people comment, but I mean, putting a line down the middle, painting slow, painting the arrows, I can understand maybe some people might want to comment on a blinking stop sign, but couldn't you just do all that right now and, you know, get the project done? It's been a year.
People will want to comment.
On a line down the middle of the road? There's lines down the middle of the road everywhere. Okay. I noticed on the bill list, there is a payment, it seems about $18,000 a month to Engineered Solutions. Do we know what that is?
Behind you.
I mean, just question, you're going to vote on it? You don't have any idea what it's for, Mr. Gindy? You don't know?
He's going to explain.
Give them details, please.
Okay.
They are the engineers that we went out for an RFP for, for the water treatment plant.
Okay.
People that came in last, last meeting.
Yes, they were here a couple of months ago. Not the one last meeting, a couple of months ago. He was here.
That was not Agri, but the other guy.
Yeah. The guy Chuck.
How long are we maintaining that contract?
Right now, it goes out for an RFP, so it's for this year, 2023. And then when we go out for RFPs again, they'll determine whether we do it again for them or not.
That's $18,000 a month?
No, sometimes it was $20,000, sometimes it was $4,000. So it's whatever he works on during the month that's approved by the administrator.
Okay. Because I saw it was $70,000 for four months, so.
Yeah. Unless you had to get a couple that were like $4,000. So it varies.
Okay. So again, I have minutes in the meeting from February 25th, 2019, where Mr. Baker made a report on the water quality. He stated that the majority of the dirty water occurs north of the train tracks at Whitehead. But that's not what the men from Agri said. They said it's in the northwest section of town. Why was it this way then and now it's different? Mr. Baker also said that the solution is to rebuild the older sections of the water infrastructure. And he stated a report was submitted to detail the future investments the Borough will make in its water infrastructure. So that was like four and a half years ago. Has any part of the infrastructure, the older pipes been replaced yet?
Would you care to comment, sir? And which pipes have we been?
Any pipes that have been replaced based on the report given four and a half years ago?
If you remember the report four and a half years ago off the top of your head.
I don't.
Oh, yes, neither do I.
I mean, that's kind of the answer right there. You don't even remember that you had a report and we're still talking about it today. My next question is, we've decided, I guess, that we're going to replace all the water meters. We're going to spend $2 million to do that?
What was the cost for that? Ah, $2 million.
So you're, so you're going to spend $2 million for stuff at the end of the pipes, but not actually replace the pipes that are causing the problem? The question is, how are you going to replace someone's water meter physically? What do you have to do?
Go into somebody's house and replace it.
Run something out from that meter to the outside of your house? I don't think they actually, do they pull the whole meter out or isn't there a meter that goes to the outside?
You know the details.
You know the details, sir. You're gonna explain the details?
Yeah, there's gonna be a new meter, and it's gonna be able to read, be read through the system.
Okay. So, you have to take the water meter out. You can't just disconnect the old one. You gotta shut the water off of the street unless there's some new technology?
No. It'll, it'll, residents will be informed. They'll have to make an appointment, and then the water meter will be replaced.
And what if it, when you turn that valve that haven't been turned, maybe some houses in 50, 60, 70 years, what happens when that valve breaks? Because that's an occurrence that was going on some time ago, when people selling homes were, the valve was tested and some broke. What happens to the resident if the town breaks his, shut off valve at the street?
That will be responsible.
The town is going to pay to replace it?
Town breaks it, yes.
If the town breaks it. Okay. Is that in writing anywhere?
The good thing for the borough is when we replaced about 600 and so a couple of years ago, we did not run into that situation. So, that's a good sign for the borough. Not gonna say it's gonna happen throughout the whole borough, but at least that first 600, 650, it did not happen.
And do we know how long it would take to get that replaced? I believe it has to be excavated, correct?
Yeah, I don't know.
I know, like mine is in the sidewalk in front of my house.
Yeah, that I don't have an answer for.
Next to a tree. You know, this, this idea that we're gonna replace all the water meters over time, I believe that's a good idea. But the priority should be to clean or re-line or replace the pipes. You had a report four and a half years ago that said that's what had to be done. Mr. Baker stated that the borough infrastructure is a disaster. It certainly hasn't gotten any better. Mr. Guchenski, in your comments, you stated that our system is in need of repair, and it will impact water rates. Well, we have the water rates impacted, but we certainly haven't done the repairs. And Mayor, in your comments, you said it's $50 million to repair the water system. Obviously, that's gonna be a lot more expensive now with the way inflation's been the last couple of years. So, the longer you wait, the more it's gonna cost. And in the meantime, people are suffering with brown water. There were people on Facebook saying they've never had, you know, they've lived in other towns and they've never experienced this. So, I just don't understand. If you have any comments at all, a couple of you are campaigning now. Good luck to you in the campaign, but you're saying you're gonna be the change in the future. But you've been here since this report went on, and nothing is done. You're, you're all looking at me with strange faces and asking other people to answer the questions. Have you done anything in four and a half years?
We implemented a new well, R2.
Not the pipes?
It's not the pipes, but you gotta start, you have to start at the beginning.
I know you've done other things, but the problem is, you had a report that said you have to replace the pipes. Mr. Gindy's smiling. I guess he's done so. You've had meetings with your Utilities Commission. Have you done anything?
They don't control that part, but we'll talk about it.
The Utility Commission doesn't?
We will talk about it in my report.
We will?
Today.
Oh, good, good. Was Agra supposed to be here today? I thought they were coming with a report.
No, they'll be, they'll be coming most likely in the next meeting.
At the next meeting. I thought they were gonna be here at this meeting.
Nope.
You guys should talk. So, have you had a commission meeting or your utility committee meeting?
Since you and I spoke, no.
Okay. So, who gave you the report?
It's not a report. It's what we have done in the last past five years, like you just asked.
Okay. So, you still haven't worked with the professionals at all to detail a plan to replace the pipes?
Replace the pipes?
Line or clean the pipes?
We spoke about lining the pipes two weeks.
But you don't have a plan yet. And this is four and a half years.
Thank you, Joe.
Let's, let's have your report. That'll be very good.
Thank you. Enjoy.
Anyone else on first call?
Good evening, Mayor Crenzal and council members. I just want to put something straight. I don't know if.
Are your name and address?
Joe Donato. I live at 30 Daley Street here in South River.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I don't know if everybody may recall, but some years ago, we had a horrific fire on Ferry Street. Good portion of a block was taken out in the fire. And I remember it because all the activity went on. I also remembered because where I live on Daley Street, we lost our power. That's something that'll come later. Now, this, this other one we had on Main Street recently, for the first time, and I had no problems with buying water after that fire. I'd assume we had to use as much water, at least, at that fire as we had on the fire on Main Street this past couple, it was a week or two ago. And all of a sudden, I got this very dark reddish-brown water in my house. I could not see the bottom of my toilet. It was so bad. Yes, it did clear up in a day or so, but I never had that before. The power went out again, but the good part about it is, I got a whole house generator, and it works. So, I'm happy to know it works. The point I'm trying to make is, the water problem has begun progressively worse all these years. The sooner we address it, and it's gonna take years and years to get this thing resolved, the sooner we address it, the better. You had a lot of, you had at least two reports, one back, I believe, in 90, 1998, which I requested, and nobody seems to have it. I was told the town engineer doesn't have it, the borough doesn't have it. From what I understand, it was a comprehensive report, which some of the improvements were made at the time based on that report. Now, we have another, I assume, some type of report that was submitted in 2019, and I don't know if that report is actually available to be used for what we're doing now as a guide to find out where the problems are and what to address first. But let's, let's start doing it. And right now, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Moving on to the agenda, I'm pulling the mayoral appointments concerning the Human Relations Commission. After talking to them at the Honduran flag raising, we're going to hold off on any of those appointments. We will move then on to the consent resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution 2023-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now, therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the below list of resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Resolution 282, appointment of Robert Herrera as a crossing guard. 283, authorizing purchases and emergency repairs through state contracts. 284, authorizing the appointment of Ashley Braille to dispatcher. 285, property tax refund for a totally disabled veteran. 286, appointment of Recreation Department employees. 287, authorize certain utility refunds. 288, accept August 21st, 2023, regular and executive session minutes. 289, accept September 12th, 2023, special and executive session minutes. 290, authorize the bills and claims list.
Your pleasure on the resolutions.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Role call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Guchenski?
Yes, with the, I'd like to abstain from Resolution 288, please.
Councilwoman Meira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes, with an abstention to Resolution 289.
So noted.
There are no new business. So, now we're down to governing body comments for the good and welfare of the borough. Where'd I start? Okay, Councilwoman Meira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go back and say that we had a, an eventful September and beginning of October with the Folklore Festival at the Portuguese Club, the Honduran Flag Raising, which, if you were able to stop by, was very well attended. There's no doubt that there was issues with finding parking. And it was sad that we had to cancel Homecoming Parade this year. I know the kids were upset about that, but they still got to show off their floats during Spirit Week. The Halloween decorating contest, I just want to mention that I'll be joining that contest this, excuse me, this year. My husband went Halloween crazy this year. So, if you have a chance and drive down Main Street, and you want to be scared a little bit, stop by. I also want to say, regarding the signage and issues with traffic, both on Virginia Street and hopefully, looking into Whitehead Avenue, I did research on things that other towns had been doing. There was a crosswalk safety signal implementation in Hazlet Township this past year. They were able to get funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. They, they got $62,000 of that funds and purchased 26 new pedestrian signs for 13 crosswalks. And they have this whole thing on their website regarding which signs and crosswalks they implemented. They also received, and this was with the Hazlet Police Department, they received $13,000 for 2022 NJ Pedestrian Safety Enforcement and Education Grant. And they trained some of the officers to run pedestrian decoy education and enforcement details. I thought this would be something great for us to look into as well. I mean, just looking at $60,000 and getting 26 new pedestrian signs and 13, for 13 crosswalks, I think that's a great idea. I think people tend to be more cautious when they do see a pedestrian crosswalk, a large one, on the street. Having more of those could be a little more effective as well. And if you look on the, when I looked at the, the pictures that they had from Hazlet, they had blinking crosswalk signs. So, I guess they, the kids, when they got to the corner and they pressed the button, the crosswalk blinked, and it was solar-powered. I think these are something we really need to invest, especially on our main roads where kids use those streets to go to school, or even ride their bikes. So, I just wanted to bring that up to the council. I hope that we can put up our plan that we got from Kleinfelder onto our borough website as well. I don't know if we're waiting for them to come back or not, but I know not everybody watches these meetings, not everybody pays attention to what's going on. Having reports like that that are given to us and put on our borough webpage is very important. And I just want to know, where are we going from here? We've got the study. The suggestion on that report was 70,000 feet of pipe that needs to be replaced. Can we start now? Are we going to put something up for bid or start on that plan? Because we can't keep waiting for this. Do we have an answer for that? Are we starting the plan this year? Are we waiting until next year? What is our plan, Mayor?
I'll address that in a little while.
Okay. I hope to get more information, because I seem to only get it when I get here anyway. That's why I ask these questions. And hopefully, we can give a better answer to our residents regarding their water. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Guchenski?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public safety workers, our police and fire for the outstanding job that they did last week with the incident that we had on Main Street. Robert Wood Johnson. Also, watch out for the children. They're out on the streets and everything like that now, too, while the weather is still with us, with Halloween coming upon us. And as a question, as far as that goes, I believe we did start a pro, a certain amount of a program on Alborn Street, didn't we, Bruce?
Yes, we did.
We did a survey of when we repaved it, and we surveyed the sewage system, and also, I believe, the water distribution system there?
Replaced the water mains.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it, it had, we did implement a program. It's just that it's slow, because what we're doing is, as we repave these streets, we would very much so like to alleviate opening them up again to do any repair work. So, like I said, we do have somewhat of a plan in place. I mean, it's a little bit slow going on, but it is there at the best of our ability right now. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
So, as was, it was mentioned previously, just want to thank the Fire Department again for their efforts on Sunday. Chief, also thank you to the police officers. Huge shout-out, Sandra, you don't give yourself enough credit. You, Irina, Nicole, you guys did a phenomenal job on Saturday with the Human Relations Committee. Extremely grateful to have you guys just put on these events. Also, to Jonathan, who was the organizer of the event. Man, I went there, was trying to help out as much as possible. He was stressed, trying to make sure everything was okay. But hopefully, he didn't get discouraged, because it was a wonderful event that was attended by many members of our community from in-town, out-of-town, from everywhere. And it was just a beautiful thing to see. Thursday, I, Chief, if I'm not mistaken, on the 4th, the high schools have in there a, a drill, the 5th. Everyone's going to be evacuated from the high school, including teachers, professionals. They will be moved to the St. Mary's parking lot. So, St. Mar, uh, sorry, St. Coptic Church parking lot, yes. So, please be on the lookout. Don't be alarmed if you see that. And then, just something, I know we keep talking about water. And you're right, Mr. Hausmann, I think everyone's right up here as well. We keep, I don't want us, anyone to keep blaming each other. Like, this is an issue that has existed for years. We have to come to a solution. Bipartisanship, work together somehow, because this is not going to, the only way this is going to get better is if we create the plan, implement a plan, and we continue to follow that plan. We can do all this, but it needs to be followed. And Joe, you're gonna have to be creative, because in terms of finances, you know, how, how do we do this? We have to look at grants. We have to, Dawn, I know you're helping in that, that area, so thank you. But we really have to try to find a solution to come together and start replacing this, whether it's now, beginning of next year. We have to start doing this. Enough is enough. We cannot continue to kick the can down the road. These pipes probably should have started, excuse me, should have probably have started, been replaced, what, early 2000s, late 1990s?
Twenty years ago.
Um, and it's just time that we, we try to find solutions together. And by working together, I'm a big fan of synergy. I think we can accomplish a lot of things. So, again, yeah, I, I don't care who gets credit for it, as long as our residents benefit. That's all that matters to me. And I, I think if we all put our heads together, we will find solutions that, you know, will make it better somehow. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
Yeah, I'd like to also thank the Fire Department for their great work at the fire. That really could have been.
Talking to the microphone?
Oh, yeah. I'm talking to you. That really could have been more disastrous, because those buildings are so close. So, thank them all. Thank the Women's Auxiliary, the Police Department, everyone that was there to help out. As you can see, we're all wearing some form of pink tonight. I asked you all to do that in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whether you've been indirectly or directly affected by that, we wanted to just show our support for, for this and any kind of cancer that may have touched your life. So, I thank you all for indulging me with this. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, earlier in the meeting, Doreen, I've had the opportunity to speak to Lauren quite a while ago about Blue Acres. She is a person that I would like you to speak to. She educated me on a lot of great opportunities that we can actually utilize Blue Acres. So, I will be reaching out to you. Also, when it comes down to our roads, such as Whitehead Avenue, the chief, myself, Art Lindensky, we had the opportunity to speak to the Department of Transportation from the county, which was John Carroll. We are working on a program to help the concept of speeders, not only on Whitehead Avenue, but most of the other connecting roads. This is a serious matter. We have lost several lives. But I, I'd like to reach out to you and, you know, have you speak to this guy as well. Yeah, so, he knows me. So, you should reach out to him. Sandra Adalino, you did a remarkable job. I can't thank you enough. I saw the stress in your face that day. I, I know what you're going through. Mr. Hausmann, you know, four years ago, you're right, Bob Baker came before us and actually gave us some type of report. The problem I have with Mr. Baker was, in the end of the conversation, he got himself in a little bit of a problem. So, the way he spoke, I probably am not gonna take his word for it. Most of our complaints have been always coming from the northeast, which is Manush, Hollander, that kind of area. So, you understand this. Matter of fact, everybody understands this. This problem has been going on for years. I have reports from 2013 showing brown water. I have reports from 2013 showing brown water. We are all to blame. No matter how you want to angle it, we are all to blame. Four and a half years ago, I got back onto the council. Since then, we have spent literally almost five, actually more than $5 million just to fix the infrastructure. I'll help you out with understanding what that means. It's like a human heart. When you have a problem, you fix the heart first, and then you fix the arteries. And that's exactly what we're doing. So when we had the engineer come in with a plan and explain the whole, the arteries and the lines, we understand what has to be done, and this is our next step. From replacing wells to hydrants to mainframes, and now we're at the last step, which is your lines. And I promise you this, the lines will get fixed, regardless of who's sitting up here. The lines will be replaced, or will be acoustic, will be aligned, whatever must be, we need to fix the problem. Enough is enough. That's all I have to say. Be careful. Halloween's coming, kids are gonna be out, and be safe in your driving. That's all I have.
Okay. Again, thank you to all those involved with the Main Street Fire, Herculean task, but the other buildings, the neighboring buildings were saved. Job well done by the police, the rescue squad and everybody else. I mean, at one point, they were taking water out of the, the river, shooting it into the fire. It was, it's an old building and it burned. As I've often said, South River's a happening place. The Mexican Flag Raising, I was sick for that and for the Hondorans. I had an emergency out of town. But from what I understand, I did stop at the Honduran Festival later on. It's a happening place. Lots of people there, having a good time. There are other places, times that the town can get together. The trunk-or-treat, the Russian Fall Festival, Coffee with a Cop, this Wednesday, come, 8 to 10, on, I still call it the Old Hebrews Place. Come down, enjoy yourselves, have a good time, get to know your neighbor, say hello to a police officer. They're really nice people. You've heard about, basically, you know, everybody keeps saying, well, what is the plan? And you've heard bits and pieces of it. Essentially, it's going on several tracks. One, the water meters, that's one track. But the other one is getting the water system itself operational. The first thing they had to do was, after the Baker era, was evaluate the water treatment plant, the chemicals that are going into there. Evaluate the interconnection valves with East Brunswick, because we're getting water. In fact, right now, we're getting our water from East Brunswick. Look at the wells, replacing well number two, evaluate wells five and six. The back wash pond, the whole system down at DPW, all of that has been looked at so that we can produce clean water. And then came the distribution system. We're doing little things. Install three auto flushers at dead ends that are in problem areas, so that the water can continually keep moving and automatically flush the system out. We know through the Thomas Street Fire where we need to go, because we've established our target areas. And now with the latest report, we know what we need to know. So now we are into the next step. How much is all this gonna cost? Everything's gonna be on the table. We're looking at everything. We are going to evaluate the costs and then look at grants from the state and feds, and we will keep you abreast as to what is going on. That is the plan. Of course, other little things. As we go on, you've heard about Alborn Street, there was Raritan Avenue. As we're going to fix a street, we're going to replace the pipes. So that's also being done across the town. We are going into closed session. The meeting will effectively end at this point. There will be no action taken. So I wish you all a good night, and we will see you on, I believe, what is it, October 23rd? So we'll see you then. Okay? Then, Madam Clerk, may we have the resolution to go into close? Good night, everyone.
Resolution 291, whereas Section 8 of Chapter 231, Public Law 1975 permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances, and whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River in the County of Middlesex and the State of New Jersey that the public be excluded upon the here and after subject matter and that the such subject matter, to be so discussed, is as follows. Litigation, be it further resolved, that such record of the above discussion will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Olivera. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Guchenski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
We shall return. Motion to open, motion to open has been made by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. Is there anything to come before us? Hearing, none.